Thank you. High five. Great job. Thank you so much to my amazing intern for the day. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm calling to order the Monday, August 4th Committee of the Whole for Planning and Public Works. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. We do have a rather large and kind of mixed agenda. This will be the only committee of the whole for the month of August as the council will be going on recess. We'll kick it off with item number one, Approval of an On-Call Survey and Mapping Services Agreement with Public Works. Introducing this item is -- oh, I'm so sorry. Council members in attendance include Council President Kritzer, Council Vice President Forsyth, Council Member Noeva Kamina, Council Member Salahudin, Council Member Anderson, and myself, Council Member Stewart. And with that, we will go back to item number one. Introducing this item is Deputy Director Chris Stinger. Welcome.
Thank you, Council Member Stewart. Good afternoon. As introduced, I'm Christopher Stinger, Deputy Director of Public Works for Environmental Programs and Utilities. Today, I'm bringing forward this item for your consideration to approve an on-call survey and mapping services agreement through our standard RFQ process. We evaluated and ranked consultant qualifications, initially selecting the top two firms. However, before we could move forward with the contract, we were notified that one of the firms was closing their operations and could not accept the award. To maintain continuity and capacity for on-call services, we would like to extend the offer to the next highest-scoring firm, David Evans &amp; Associates. We are proposing a two-year contract not to exceed $150,000 with optional one-year renewal. For your awareness, no contract was ever signed with the original firm that dropped out, and there are no outstanding items or invoices with that firm. We'd like to place this on the September 2nd consent agenda, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Chris. Are there any questions from the council? Council Member Noeva Kamina.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Stinger, hi. Great to see you. Just a question on -- because understanding that we didn't sign a contract with the initial one, are there any differences or any deltas between the two contracts, one that we were already discussing for the first one and this one now?
Not that I'm aware of, Council member, but I can follow up and take a look at them and then get back to you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Any objections to this item going to consent on September 2nd? Okay, seeing none, we'll have this back next month. Thanks so much, Chris. Moving on to item number two on our agenda, the East Rail Partners Memorandum of Agreement. Introducing this item will be Parks Director Lorraine Hamilton and Lindsay Falkenberg, Parks Planning Manager. Thank you.
Good afternoon, City Council. We are here to bring forward the East Rail Memorandum of Agreement. I'm joined today by Lindsay Falkenberg, our Parks Planning Manager, who will present this item. Hello, City Council. I'm excited to be here today to introduce the East Rail Memorandum of Agreement, which would affirm Redmond's commitment to the East Rail project and partners for the next 10 years. A little bit of background about this, the East Rail is an envisioned 42-mile-long trail located here on the east side that connects communities from Renton all the way to the Snohomish County line and eventually beyond. Various jurisdictions and municipalities work on making this vision a reality, including Redmond, Bellevue, Woodenville, Renton, Kirkland, and King County. Also supporting this vision is the East Rail Partners, which is a nonprofit organization that focuses on advocacy, community engagement, business engagement, and trail activation. Here in Redmond, I'm sure you all know that we are really lucky to own 3.9 miles of the East Rail, a spur that we call the Redmond Central Connector, which connects to Mamish, Redmond, and Kirkland and provides easy access to our city's downtown core, as well as businesses along Willow Road. And we are really proud to be the first jurisdiction to complete our section of trail. In 2013, King County created the Regional Advisory Council for the East Rail, which our very own Council Member Forsyth is the current co-chair of. And that RAC helps to align the region around this vision and coordinate among other jurisdictions. And in 2018, the East Rail Partners, the nonprofit, was created, and about 1/3 of their budget comes from jurisdictional funding. And in turn, they support us by advocating for funding and activating the trail through various events and relationships with businesses and doing community engagement work to understand what the community wants and where they want it. And so in order to continue supporting them and participating in the RAC as a whole, we're looking to renew our commitment to this project through the MOA. And this has been reviewed by legal and is in line with the previous MOA that we signed in 2013 or 2016 -- I think it was 2013. And we are hoping to add this to the consent agenda on September 2nd. And are there any questions?
Thank you so much. Really appreciate the overview. First, I'll turn it to Council Member Forsyth in case she has any additional comments.
I'm just really excited to see this hopefully be put on consent. It's a really worthy project for us all. Not often do we get to do a bike trail and a pedestrian trail that spans an entire county and goes up to another county and down south into another county. So this is a really unique project, and it's been my pleasure to serve on this for the last six years.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Are there any questions on the Memorandum of Agreement? Council President Kritzer.
Well, first, I want to say thank you to Council Vice President Forsyth for her leadership. This is such an important regional project, and it's really wonderful to have Redmond playing such a significant role. So thank you very much and for keeping us updated on it. My only question is, do we have a date and time yet set for our ribbon cutting?
We do, yeah. We're excited to share that it will be on -- right, okay. On September 12th at 10:00 a.m. The save the date is coming this week, and so stay tuned for that. But we're excited to see, hopefully, all of you there.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Are there any other questions from the council? Are there any objections to having this item go to consent on September 2nd? Well, with that, we'll put this on consent September 2nd, and we'll see on September 12th at 10:00 a.m. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next item is from the Finance Department, and it is regarding the dissolution of Community Facilities District 2014-01. Introducing this item is Finance Director Kelly Cochran. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council. This is a follow-up to a previous update where we notified council that the board is looking to dissolve CFD 2014-1. At the last board meeting, they did elect to move forward with those action -- with the action, and the plan will be they will take that formal vote on approval of the resolution in September. At that point, I would then ask permission to put that on the consent agenda for council approval on September 16th without a stop at FAC, if that's all right.
And as I have the pleasure of chairing both that body and this body, I'll just quickly say it has been a pretty straightforward process over at the CFD. Microsoft petitioned for the dissolution. The original projects have been completed. The hoped-for projects were eventually ruled inappropriate for that use of funds, and so Microsoft has petitioned for the dissolution of this, although we still do have another CFD in our city. And of course, I think the partnership with the city and all the wonderful infrastructure we get to use every single day that has been built by this Community Facilities District will be important to our community for a long time to come. Are there questions on the process or the decision? Council President Kritzer, who is also a supervisor on the Board of Supervisors for the CFD.
Yeah, thank you very much. Want to express my appreciation to Microsoft for this very innovative collaboration that has brought us some amazing city infrastructure. And just one note that I think we had discussed in that meeting was getting a follow-up on the exact balances and as well as the kind of potential explored uses, which I think we discussed them, but I think we were supposed to get in writing some more details on that, and I'm not sure if we did receive all of those, so.
Balances were provided at the last meeting. There was 1.3 million remaining in 2014-1, and then at that time, we had talked about other uses. The balance sheets were submitted either as part of the attachments.
I missed that. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, yeah. But yeah, we did have a discussion on this, and I will look back into those documents. Thank you. Appreciate that.
And just to provide some wayfinding and follow-up on that, we'll have an opportunity to discuss it again at the CFD meeting on September 2nd if there are remaining questions at the board.
Yep.
Council President Kritzer.
Yeah, I will note that I think our discussion, as far as I remember at the CFD, was that we did not take any action or particularly recommend this, but that we intended to put it on the agenda for a vote for the future. So I just wanted to clarify that. We did not actually direct yet to dissolve it.
Right. The vote will occur at the first meeting -- at the meeting in September, and then we'll follow up with this approval required from council at the September 16th meeting.
Thank you.
And for the listening public, if you'd like to see the proposed schedule on that, it begins on page 47 of the packet. Are there other questions from the council on this item? Okay, seeing none, are there any objections to this item going to consent on September the 16th? This one's a little later in order to allow for the potential CFD action earlier in the month. No objections to September 16th. That will be our tentative plan then. Thank you, Director.
If there's any changes, I will follow up at the FAC meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Washington State Department of Transportation Regional Mobility Grant Acceptance. We are excited to chat with this -- about this item with Deputy Director Seraphie Allen and Francesca Liberty. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. Yeah, we're excited to talk about this item as well, and I'll just go ahead and turn it over to Francesca to get us going.
All right, thanks. So as you know, Redmond was awarded the Regional Mobility Grant from WashDOT for the 2025 to 2027 biennium. The total amount for the grant funding being provided to the city of Redmond is $975,000, with the city providing a $244,000 match from a combination of the Lodging and Tax Advisory Committee funds, the commuter assistance office funds, and the Commute Trip Reduction Program funds. The funding will be used to implement a two-year pilot of an on-demand micro-transit shuttle in the downtown Redmond and Education Hill neighborhoods, and the exact routing for that would be determined in collaboration with our chosen service provider. The grant also includes implementation of a shared parking program to increase parking access and optimize underutilized off-street parking in the downtown area. An RFP for the vendor to manage the shuttle service is closed now, closed on July 21st. We're evaluating the submittals for that RFP, and we're reviewing the applications so that we can find a vendor that will help balance our goals and needs and budgetary needs especially for this project. We're expected to get underway with some planning in Q4 and then a soft opening of the shuttle program and shared parking program in Q1 of 2026, in conjunction with the Light Rail Crosslight Connection opening across I-90. And then, following that, a big promotional push to get folks, you know, aware and excited in Q2 of 2026. So we're requesting approval of this grant on the consent agenda at the September 2nd business meeting.
Thank you so much, Francesca. Are there questions on this item from the council? Council Member Noeva Kamina.
Thank you. No questions, just a comment that I'm very excited about this, about, you know, being able to get our residents onto transit and have accessibility to it during that last mile. I'm looking forward to see our communication plan, how we let folks know, because a lot of times, we'll have these really great resources and just need to get folks in touch with -- that need these resources in touch with them. So I'm super excited. Thank you.
Are there other questions from the council? Any objections to this item going to consent on September 2nd? Seeing none, we will excitedly have this one back, I think. Lots of thumbs up around the table. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is also with planning and community development. It is regarding the Bellwether-Prisma Purchase and Sale Agreement. Introducing this item is Deputy Director Seraphie Allen, and we are also joined by Parks Deputy Director Dave Chuchek. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm just pulling up my notes here. Okay, so today, we are seeking council's approval and direction -- oh, sorry, there's like six items, and I have all the screens in different places.
For the listening public, the Bellwether Housing Development is a development of deeply affordable housing that is intended to come to the Sound Transit surplus land in the Overlake Village neighborhood, right across from the Light Rail Station. So we are excited about that. The purchase and sale that we're about to discuss is actually for the city property inside that development, and I think the staff will tell us about it in just a moment.
Yeah, and my notes somehow got deleted on here, so I'm going to try on this one. So what this is, is this, we've come to you already with the Memorandum of Understanding a couple months ago that the council passed, and we are now here to execute on the purchase and sale agreement. And so the agreement has been attached in your packet. And as a reminder, this project is an affordable housing project that's next to the Overlake Station, 328 units of affordable housing, and we are looking at purchasing that -- a commercial space that's approximately 1,600 square feet. And we are going to still be working on what services will be provided, but two things that are different from the last time we were before you on this topic is that, one, I'm excited to share that we have confirmation that we received the Commerce Grant from the state, and so that's fantastic. And just submitted that today, actually, that questionnaire with them. And then, two, is that you might have noticed in the memo that we are also going to be acquiring through a deed of dedication, which is why it's not included in the council packet because it's more administrative, but what's called Parcel B, which is right next to the project, and it's currently zoned for open space and is needed for Bellwether to meet kind of their zoning requirements and permitting requirements that we have. But we are working on partnering with them on how we might activate that space. And so that area will also be kind of under planning as well, but they'll use it for construction and then turn it back over to us. So just wanted to share that as a kind of exciting development and update, and it's right across the street from where the city's annex is. Any questions? And I have Dave here with me as well.
Thank you. I know I have some immediate follow-up questions on the new information that was shared, but are there other questions from the council? Okay, I'll go ahead and hop in. Could you remind us what the Commerce Grant is, Deputy Director Allen?
Yes, so we applied for the state earmark, and it's $618,000, which was the estimate for the project that we have for the purchase and for the tenant improvements to the space. And we had lobbied for that at the state and received it.
Great, and that was one of our top legislative priorities this last year. Thank you. So that is confirmed. I see you, Council Member Anderson. One moment, and I just want to clarify that you are -- when you say that the city will be acquiring through a deed of dedication, Parcel B, do you mean the triangle lot that is furthest west on that property?
Yeah, that's correct.
That is currently zoned for like the food trucks and the like to be around it?
Yes, and so that was part of the discussion with Bellwether, as they felt like it was too much for them to take on -- like their original renderings of what they had was too much for them to be able to feel like they needed to activate and could do all that space. And so it was part of the permitting agreement, so instead, they actually added another commercial space in their building that they'll be responsible for leasing. But we don't want that property to sit vacant and felt like it's something that could be activated and that the city might be able to have some use for it, and particularly with our proximity across the street.
Okay. Lots of ways to activate.
Lots of ways to think about it.
That is a very exciting conversation to come up.
It'll come also through the budgeting process, I think, as we -- and as a reminder, this property isn't supposed to open until 2028, so we still have a lot of time for planning purposes. And I would expect we might think about applying for another grant for that space as well.
Okay, yeah, that's great. All right, Council Member Anderson, thank you for your patience.
Just for clarification on this item, the Commerce Grant was -- have we accepted that grant yet?
We have not accepted that grant. I just filled out the "hey, are you project ready to go" today. They sent it last week.
So the question would be, how do we purchase -- how do we agree to a purchase and sale agreement without that grant?
So we actually already have this in the budget within the capital improvement budget that the city set aside, so if we hadn't have received the grant, we still have the funds available, and we'll reimburse ourselves, but I'll -- yep, Director Cochran is shaking her head.
So it's sort of like a reimbursement?
Exactly.
Excellent, thank you.
Has the conversation sparked any additional questions from the council? I see some thumbs up. Any further questions? Okay, thank you so much, everyone. Is there any objection to this item going to consent on September 2nd? Seeing none, lots of thumbs up. Thank you so much, Deputy Directors. We appreciate your time. The next item on our agenda is the 2025 Annual Code Cleanup. Introducing this one, Deputy Director Seraphie Allen, and it looks like Jeff Churchill is joining us at the table. Thank you.
Hello again. Jeff Churchill is here today to brief the committee on the annual work items of minor amendments to the Redmond Zoning Code to address errors, conflicts, or some ambiguities. Staff is asking for this item to be placed on the September 2nd consent agenda, and I'll turn it over to Jeff.
Good afternoon, council members. Throughout the year, city staff identify amendments to the code that should be fixed for errors, conflicts, or text that is not clear. Sometimes those errors are found by staff. Other times, they are found by users of the code who alert staff to the issues. That could even be planning commissioners or city council members. Those items that are cleanup items are brought forward as part of an annual code cleanup package. First, I want to tell you what this is not. There are several work items underway to address substantive changes to the code, including updates to the design standards that the city council authorized in the budget and amendments to conform to 2025 state legislation. This is not that, but be assured that work is underway. This is three small items. A clarification about when off-street minimum parking requirements are triggered when there is an existing parking nonconformity. Adding a definition for culvert. And correcting an error in a table in the Procedures Chapter related to public hearing requirements for Type 5 permit applications. The Planning Commission recommended approval of these changes at its June 11th meeting, and its recommendation and a draft ordinance are in your packet this afternoon, and staff is asking this item to be placed on the September 2nd consent agenda and is happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Jeff. Are there questions on this item from the council? Seeing no questions, are there any objections to this item going to consent on September Only seeing thumbs up around the table. Thank you all for your work. Thank the whole team for us, and have a wonderful rest of your summer. Okay, the next item of business, actually, the next couple are to prepare the council for some study sessions that are coming up. The first one is regarding the Redmond Town Center Master Plan Development and Development Agreement. This item is quasi-judicial, and introducing the item is David Lee, our Planning Manager. Welcome.
Hi, good afternoon, David Lee, Planning Manager. It's great to see you all again. I have the great pleasure of introducing you to Alex Hunt, our Senior Planner, who's going to go over the Redmond Town Center Master Plan and DA quasi-judicial review. Alex.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council members. Again, my name is Alex Hunt. I'm a Senior Planner with the Planning and Community Development Division. As a reminder, and as mentioned, this is a quasi-judicial item. That means that this is governed by the appearance-of-fairness doctrine. Communications outside the scope of a council meeting must be disclosed and could result in the disqualification of a decision-maker if objections to participation are raised. So I just wanted to give that disclaimer upfront. So the item before us for discussion is a Master Plan Development and a Development Agreement application. So this would be for the infill development of the Redmond Town Center, the mixed-use subarea that's encompassed by the existing shopping center and surrounding parcels and sites. The proposed development would occur across five phases. Overall, development would be a mixture of mixed-use buildings, including residential and commercial uses, for a total of approximately 670 units up to 930 units, depending on the options that are selected by the developer, as detailed in the master plan, and then approximately 55,000 square feet of commercial retail uses, new commercial retail uses as well. Most of the existing Redmond Town Center shopping center would remain, with some exceptions. Phase 3 would redevelop the existing BJ's Restaurant site, and Phases 4 and 5 would redevelop the northwest and northeast corners of the site across from the Light Rail Station, or the northwest and northeast corners of the shopping center, I should say. Buildings up to 12 stories are going to be proposed through this master plan, and that's through the Exceptional Amenities for Additional Height Program that's stipulated in the Redmond Zoning Code. Among other incentive techniques, the development is going to be providing 20% of all new units to be affordable at 60% of the area median income. So that's the -- one of the exceptional amenities to achieve that exceptional height. And the next steps for this item will be study session on September 23rd and tentatively a public hearing on October 21st. So I'm happy to take any questions at this time. If there are additional questions that come up prior to the study session, I'm happy to address those via email anytime before September 1st if I could receive those. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you, David. Really appreciate that. Council, what questions do we have for the study session on September 9th? Council President Kritzer.
Thank you so much. This should be a good discussion. A couple questions. One is just for the sake of the fact that we haven't done -- we don't do the quasi-judicial that often. Can you just remind us? It sounds like we can ask questions to you, but who else the council would be able to direct any questions or have any communications with to avoid any violations of the appearance of fairness doctrine?
You can send them over to myself or Director Carol Holland for any routing of those questions, and we can certainly work through the issues matrix that we generally create during the study session.
Great, thank you. And will the applicant be joining us for the study session as well or to answer any questions?
Yes, I believe they will be.
They'll be there. However, study session, generally, we don't have the applicants respond to questions during that time. We can certainly have that open during the hearing itself, correct?
Right. Okay, thank you.
Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. I can imagine we're going to get a lot of questions about this. It's been a hot topic in the past, so when we see future conversations, I think it'd be good for us to see phasing of what their timeline might look like and if there are any renderings that they have, just so that we're being fully transparent with the community because we're going to get a lot of those questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll go ahead and hop in with a couple of my thoughts. We had a different composition of our council when we last sent this back to the applicant, so I think it would be good at the study session to remind the public and the council what were the items, kind of the bar that we set for the applicant to meet. In my mind, there were a few that stood out, particularly around housing and affordability, sustainability, and improvements of a walkable and recyclable neighborhood. And much of that came through very clearly in the materials we received in our packet, but I do think it would be important to demonstrate that the bars that we set were met on that because that is, of course, the decision we have in front of us. And I do agree with the council president. I'm actually not sure if it's pertinent to the decision before us about their timelines, but I think there's just a lot of public interest. So to the extent the applicant is willing to share, I think that that is helpful to share with community. Are there other questions from the council? Council President Kritzer.
I guess just doubling down on those two comments, I think in addition to kind of timelines, it would just be helpful to be really clear in the presentation as the public will be listening in on what, as you mentioned just now, that, for example, because I've already heard, not that I have been discussing it, but people have directed comments out in the community that, you know, people think the whole thing is going to get changed versus what parts will change, what parts aren't being proposed to change, and then timeline for those changes for the parts that would change. I know that when we discussed some of the zoning on this area initially, we -- there was a lot of questions about the open space aspect, so I think that would also be great to have some clarifications on as well.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Okay, if you have any more, between now and September 9th, please contact Planning and Community Development. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
The second item for feedback is our Urban Centers Parking Management Existing Conditions Report. This one is also with Planning and Community Development. The study session is scheduled for September 9th, and here to introduce the items again are Deputy Director Allen and it looks like Caroline Chapman is on the line. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll go ahead and jump in. So the Urban Centers Parking Study and Implementation Work is a So the Urban Centers Parking Study and Implementation Work is a critical part of executing on Redmond 2050 and our transportation master plans. Just wanted to put that kind of in the reminder of context. So we've come to you before on this, but we've continued the work. And this parking plan is happening in two phases. Phase 1 is the Existing Conditions Report, which we'll be discussing in detail next month at a staff report. Staff will walk through the key findings and share proposed operational changes to our current parking strategies in response to what we've learned from this report. Some of those strategies are adding on street time limits in Overlake and Marymore Village and expanded areas of enforcement in downtown. Adding additional locations for on-street parking permits and updated pricing for the monthly permits and a shared parking pilot program in downtown, which we talked about a little bit earlier because of the grant money for that work. And then Phase 2 will focus on longer-term and larger parking policy changes, like the on-street paid parking or new permit systems, ones that might require more time to implement and analyze. And our plan is to bring those back to the council for a study session in October for 2PW and then December for a study session. So for the Phase 1, the Existing Conditions Report captures parking utilization, and this was included in your packet. I'm sure it was riveting reading for folks. And includes the downtown, Overlake, and Marymore. And I'm not going to go into all the details of what we saw, but essentially, there's capacity within our system currently. It's about how we use it. And so most of Redmond's total parking inventory is actually off-street in lots and garages. It's mostly privately owned. These have significant capacity with a peak use around 50%. And in the staff report, we'll also cover residential parking uses, how private lots are being managed, and feedback from businesses about some of the employee parking needs we've heard. Reason I'm going into a little more detail here is because Phase 1 does not require a separate council item or action from this work. You're going to see the monthly parking fee update included in the annual list of planning fees that come before you. And then Public Works is bringing forward some overall larger packages of code changes, and they're kind of looping in the parking permits and time-limited parking into that package for later this year. So I think tonight, we really, I wanted to discuss and get your direction on what you'd like to see in the September 16 staff report. Should we focus just kind of on Phase 1, which is primarily operational changes, as I said, around expanding the geography of where spaces are as well as the pricing, which has already been included in prior plans. It's more just that implementation work. So I'm not sure how much discussion or questions council does have on that. Or would you prefer to focus, have us focus on kind of sharing what some of those longer-term strategies will be? So that's kind of the question I had, is there's going to be these two phases based on some of the changes you heard. Does the council want to spend time on talking about some of those administrative changes, which is also fine, because they're still hot topics. You're definitely going to hear when parking permits increase to a higher amount. So you might want more background on that. Or focus on kind of more paid parking, bigger policy media issues that will be later for implementation in the year. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Deputy Director Allen. Can I confirm? It sounds like you said that this is scheduled for a staff report on the 16th.
We changed it, yep, for the staff. We're going to change to, change for a staff report, because if you wanted to see more, if you've read the report with the existing conditions, we just felt that we don't have as much there there for you to discuss in a study session in September for the larger policy things, but we thought a staff report might be more helpful, if you all would like that, to really like dive deeper into the utilization and parking capacity. And that's the choice I wanted to kind of give the council. If you'd like a meaty topic of parking utilization, we're happy to come and present it.
Okay, awesome. I will reserve my comments for the end. Who would like to kick us off? Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. Can we have a both and?
Sure, yeah. That's why we can have that, and we can have the study session later.
Wonderful, because I think spending a little bit of time on the Phase 1 would be helpful, but not the bulk of it. And then the bulk being on, on the Phase 2, but definitely some time on Phase 1.
Okay.
Thank you. Other comments? Council Vice President Forsyth?
I'm fully in agreement with that comment. And I'd also like to hear a bit about, we've, we've received a lot of feedback in the past year-plus since this has been implemented. If you can address some of those concerns that we've heard about in the presentation, that would be helpful, too.
Okay.
Council President Kritzer?
I would agree with the both and. I, I think, to be honest, I would love, if we're going to be making changes that are going to be impacting our residents, to be well read in on what those are going to look and, and feel like, and especially the geographies that, that will be impacted. And then I also think we, we should have a, we should have a robust policy conversation about where we want to go and, and our reasons for that. So that way, when we do hear, one, make the decision thoughtfully, but two, also, when eventually we make any changes and we hear back from the public, we, we will have really kind of thought through all the different pieces of, of the benefits and costs to different things, because it is changing from, I think in particular for me, it's interesting to be able to talk about, you know, what we see as benefits and costs of changing from the status quo.
Great. Any other comments or questions? All right, well, they've made, the team has made the straw poll rather easy. It's, it's a both and situation. In terms of questions, I thought the Current Conditions Report laid out what we all experience all the time. And again, peak utilization in downtown in a, in a privately-owned lot is averaging out around 50%. So we have lots of opportunity, and I look forward to the future pieces of this discussion. One question I had, just a tiny question that could be included in the staff report. It would be helpful to understand the turnover rate per like category of prioritization. If we're talking about a parking stall right next to Downtown Park, for instance, versus a parking stall on-street but half a mile from a transit center, you know, at the end, what's, what's the preferred turnover rate at each of those? It wasn't clear to me, like, what would be good? It was clear what is better, but what is like the benchmark or the score that we are aiming for on a couple of those?
Great, great question.
Okay.
I think that'll play into our paid parking conversation.
Wonderful.
Later on as well.
Happy, happy to hear that. Are there any questions, other questions from the council? All right, well, we can email them to the Planning and Community Development Team over the break if, if anything comes up for you. Thanks, really appreciate that, Deputy Director. The final item for consideration of a study session is with our Finance Director. I believe I have that right? Yes, Finance Director Kelly Cochran is rejoining us. Thank you. Sorry for the, the rigmarole and here, there, and everywhere. Everyone's getting their steps in today. House Bill 2015, New Funding Mechanisms for Criminal Justice.
Yeah, so we, the Finance Department is preparing for a study session to discuss the opportunities that House Bill 2015 brings to the city. It was recently passed by state legislature, and it gives Washington State, Washington State Cities two new funding mechanisms to offset criminal justice program costs. One is in the form of a grant, the other is in the form of a sales tax increase, which is about the same size, well, is the same size as the sales tax that we recently placed on the transportation, for the Transportation Benefit District. So at this point, we're estimating, if this was enacted, it would be about $5.5 million per year. There is still a lot that has been, they've been unable to answer for us, and so we've provided all of the information that we have available so far. Some of the key pieces of information that we're still waiting on is if there is going to be limitations in the amount of grants. And the state is waiting to hear more from Washington State, or City Cities, I don't know why I want to go with history, but Cities. And to see how many will be applying and what they expect to be using the grants for. That will help them sort of size or scope out the grant program. With the sales tax options, there is still discussion and further guidance coming on the supplanting of current funding for existing programs and how that will work. And so as we are continuing to attend webinars and opportunities to engage and seek information, I wanted to at least have this material in the development so that when we are ready, we can sit down quickly and have a discussion in case council wants to take action to make this implementation effective January 2026 for the city. So we've provided some draft slides that provide an overview of House Bill 2015, why it was enacted, qualifications to receive or implement any of these funding mechanisms, what we know programmatically the dollars can be spent on, and also provided some information on our current, our historical and current staffing for our police department compared to the city population. We're also tracking across the county other tax impacts to taxpayers within the city to make sure that the cumulative effects of those impacts are known. I do expect that when we are able to sit down with council with more information, we will be providing some grant opportunities or options for you to consider most, you know, which will be geared towards one-time purchases such as equipment or some programmatic enhancements that are more one-time towards homelessness or other human services outreach type of programs. We still have a little bit more to understand there about what qualifies. And then we'll be providing you with some opportunities to understand how the implementation of sales tax could or should impact other existing revenues for the city that we currently have aligned with these expenditures. But wanted to just touch base with council and see if there's anything that, at this point, you feel is missing from the presentation, or any scenarios or options that you really want to make sure that we are able to discuss when able.
Okay, thank you for that introduction. Director Cochran, questions from the council? I will, I'm happy to kick us off. Okay, so as a member of the committee that worked in partnership with you last year to solve our $6 million public safety funding, the, the main feedback I have on the, the materials so far is they don't begin with a reason for raising additional revenue at this time. Last year, we solved for the funding gap, and that included additional taxes. And in order to fund new positions that we have to date, my understanding is not gone ahead and filled. So in my mind, we're actually collecting revenues, we're not spending on public service right now. So I would like to see that resolved or, or to really have a firm understanding of the why. The other piece of this is, just as we discussed, I think, at the end of a recent committee meeting, is we do have opportunity to include this as part of a more comprehensive budget conversation next year, because we do have a little bit of time. And we, the third thing I'll just mention is, I would feel a little guilty running ahead with moving this tax forward in Redmond when our city just participated in a letter asking the county to, to slow down, which they have, on a new sales tax. So we will need to be good partners, as well as continue to meet the needs as best we can in our city. But most importantly for me is that the why. Why would we need the new revenue, and why would we need it today? Council President Kritzer?
Thank you. I think, I won't retread on many of the things, but I would, I would agree with Councilmember Stewart on several of those things. I think, main questions for me, especially on timing, is can we wait until our budget process to be able to implement this? Or are there any other kind of considerations there, since we already have budgeted for this? And then you mentioned a little bit about homelessness response, and I think in one of the slides, you have some of the eligible expenditures. But I'd be interested in, if you could give us a little more deep dive on what we understand about potential ways that, that we could use these funds. So I think that, that would be helpful to be able to understand as, as part of this conversation. Yeah, thanks. Oh, and actually, sorry, last thing. How does this fit in also, as we think about the alternative crisis response funding? And now that we have this new opportunity to do this partnership with the county, how are we thinking about the funding needs specifically for alternative crisis response going forward? If, and I, I think for me, that's, that's important to know, because when we did convene that subcommittee, that was one of the, the kind of pieces we were looking at, was filling the gap for that. And now it seems like there may be some kind of changes there, although we may still need to have, kind of contribute our part to it. So it'd be helpful to know.
Great. Thank you, Council President. Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart, thank you, because I was trying to get my words together for how I wanted to ask a question, and you, you did it beautifully. So thank you for kicking us off. The, the question that I had was around, I'm, well, let me first state by, start by stating that I'm concerned about another sales tax, because sales taxing is a very regressive way. And when we're talking about the split in the, the difference between our households, those that are even at the median versus those at the bottom, you know, we're talking about, in one of the slides, it shows upwards of, of just below $500 per Redmond household. Some households, that's not a big deal. And this is, of course, all the taxes combined, not just this additional. So I want to be clear about that. So that, that definitely causes me to pause. But two is, is a continuing conversation about right sizing of, of the department itself, and what, what does that look like? And that's not to say that, that we are neither, you know, above or below, but what is the right size? We've done phenomenal with, with some of the efficiency and process improvements that were listed on the slide. And, you know, how, how does that bring us into balance, and what are the actual needs?
Great. Thank you. Other questions from the council? Oh, and we have been joined by Councilmember Fields. Welcome. We are currently discussing the potential study session regarding HB 2015. Other questions from the council? Oops, excuse me. Okay. Two more came up for me, Director Cochran, as my colleagues were speaking. On the allowed expenditures, it would be great if we could get clarification on the pub, if these dollars could be used for the public defense new standards. And I know we're all kind of watching the Association of Counties and, and their recent appeal. Redmond currently has three public defenders on contract, but at full implementation of the new standard, we will need 10. So I appreciate that. And then regarding Councilmember Nueva Camina's comment regarding right sizing of the department, my understanding is we have somewhere in the neighborhood in police of around a dozen or so vacancies. If dollars are a reason for vacancy, then I, it would be helpful to see that justified in, in that way. It would be helpful, that's all. Final questions? Councilmember Forsyth?
Thank you. I agree with a lot of the comments that have been stated already. The one thing I'm curious about is, we were talking about potentially wrapping this into the next budget cycle and what that looks like. I'm kind of interested in that nexus of, there's usually a delay in when we get those funds. So what that delay would look like and do to the budget cycle if we do postpone it till then, and what that gap is, and just the considerations for us to, to really fully understand that picture.
Excellent. All right, does that help, Director Cochran?
It's excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Enjoy the rest of your summer. And the final item today is a briefing on the allocation of $1 million in city funds to Bellwether Housing's Prisma Development to support deeper affordable housing, deeper affordability of housing units. Introducing this item is Director Holland and Deputy Director Allen. Welcome back.
Thank you so much. So this evening, we're just providing an informational item only. And if you'll recall, we, the council allocated in the prior budget, $10 million that was carried over into this budget for affordable housing support. And there have been times where we've committed some of that housing, and we're trying to make sure that we involve the council by keeping them informed of when those housing commitments are made. You might also remember that at the, one of the last meetings we had with council, we also talked about the fact that we were kind of protecting that pot of money right now, what remained as uncommitted, a little over $4 million, because we didn't quite understand the full magnitude of what was happening with housing and human services at that point in time. But we have now been approached by Bellwether because of a housing gap and believe that this is, or I'm sorry, a funding gap, and believe that this is an appropriate use of some of those dollars. some of those dollars to help them address the cost increases and other mechanism, other things that have happened to them as they've been going through the process. So Director Allen is here, or Deputy Director Allen is here to brief and provide some additional details that essentially go above and beyond some of the information that I provided to you all via email last week.
Thank you, Director Helen. So yeah, wanted to just add, this project has unfortunately come right at the Bellwether time of federal changes, construction cost increases, and so they've identified a pretty significant budget gap. And so to, in order to make the project pencil, Bellwether has approached the city and Arch and other partners and said, you know, they needed to increase the area medium income requirements in some of the units. And so prior, it was 50 percent was the average area, medium income of the units from 30 percent to 80 percent. And they were proposing raising that to 55 percent. And when we asked them for a breakdown of what that looked like, it meant raising some of the two-bedroom and three-bedroom units from 50 percent to 60 percent area medium income. And so, you know, we said, hey, what, we can't help fund this whole gap, but it is pretty impactful for us, especially with the housing targets that we're trying to meet to try and keep as many of the larger bedroom size units, the three bedrooms and two bedrooms as low as possible. So back to that 50 percent. And so they've been going back and doing a lot of financing math, I would say. And I also want that part of this transparency is we're still working through with them exactly what the number of units would be in the, between the three bedrooms and two bedrooms. Our first priority is the three-bedroom units and making sure as many of those can be at 50 percent. And then if there's additional dollars, say the housing vouchers from the federal government does work out, then they'll be able to get even more units back to the original area median income that they had proposed. So all that to say, there's been a lot of, lot of math trying to make work, but we really felt it was an important value. And we also had the opportunity to pull King County in and say, you know, Redmond can allocate, you know, we're in some contingency funding, but if we put in money, will you put in some money? And King County was open to that as well. So with both the city and King County, we could potentially buy down 25 three-bedroom units at the minimum and then hopefully more from there, again, depending on their financing situation. So we wanted to provide this, as Carol said, to the council, just to make sure we're being fully transparent, but felt it was aligned with our city values. And as a reminder, this is a multi-year project that has many different components of it. We heard one of them earlier today and we also felt it would be helpful to have Bellwether come and actually present once they finish their funding so that they can answer all of the questions about the project. So they have a special orders of the day presentation scheduled for October 7th and will provide a holistic picture of the project and be able to answer any questions, including anything related to this as well. So staff wanted to give the opportunity to have council ask us questions. Just a reminder, this is a kind of time-sensitive request and opportunity. So with that, we'll open up for any questions.
Thank you so much, Directors. Council Vice President Forsyth.
No question, just thank you for the very clear timeline of what happened and explanation of the back and forth and the work that you've done to try to keep these as cost-effective for families as possible. So just thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields.
Yeah, what are you asking of council? Does council have a decision-making role in any of this?
Thank you for that, thank you for that question, Councilmember Fields. No, we heard though loud and clear that even though council doesn't have a role in the specific allocation and commitments of funds, that you wanted to be kept apprised of funds that were committed. And we have, have been trying to do so. We do that generally during briefings from, at the committee meeting for Public Safety and Human Services. And we do those quarterly updates with regard to affordable housing. But because this is August, we're bringing it to this committee and it is also time-sensitive because Bellwether is financing, finalizing their financing right now. And we wanted to get the informational update to you before that happened.
So, so since we don't have a decision-making role or an accountability role, I would offer two thoughts, suggestions. Number one, I'm very concerned about this for a number of reasons that I've expressed in the past. I'm concerned about setting precedent, other people having other kinds of difficulties coming to us. And then we, as I've expressed in the past, am concerned about, we are the security, we are the risk mitigation for all these projects. But, so I, if I did have a vote, I would likely vote no. But what I would like, or I'm suggesting, is that staff look at what would be the total, what would be alternatives, either direct vouchers to people to keep them, you know, protected from excessive costs for some period of time? What agreement did this developer have in order to, from a tax exemption perspective, to provide 50 percent AMI? And now that they're not going to do that, how much of that tax exemption would go away? And can that money be used, combined with city money and King County money and potential federal money, to help people directly as opposed to sending it to developers in the form of city, I'm going to call it a bailout. I'm sure that that's a bit offensive, but I can't think of a better word. So I would like to see the city look at alternatives. And I know that's probably not in your interest, but it certainly is in mine.
Oh, thank you for those comments, Councilmember Fields. And actually, we are, I think, all on the same page that staff have actually been working quite hard to make sure that the money that we are expending, or is the, aside from getting King County dollars, are the last dollars in to essentially fill this gap because council did approve both Arch funding for this project and additional funding for this project previously. So we're protecting a prior interest and commitment that the city council had made. Part of the problem is that it's related to some of the funding that was expected from the federal government in the form of vouchers. And the conversation about that is still a little bit up in the air. We believe that there may be additional information to share with you after there are some additional information about financing because we have asked the developer to go back and talk to the contributing financiers about actually filling this gap or elongating the period of time that they have for repayment. So, and then we are also looking at other opportunities that Arch has available to them to essentially help fill the gap that got created by increased costs and uncertainty over the project vouchers. So we are exploring all those opportunities and just want to reaffirm that staff is committed to doing that before spending the council dollars so they don't become bailout.
And so if you don't mind, I'll just add into that Bellwether is a nonprofit housing developer focused on providing affordable housing, so not, they're not making any gains on this work.
So just real quickly, Director Helen and Deputy Director Serpey, I did fail to mention, I really do appreciate the transparency on this and that you're coming to council with it. Again, I have, I get it that they're a nonprofit, I get it that they're a good partner, I understand all that. But I am deeply concerned still about precedent and is there a better, more direct way to use this money? So I, I'm just giving you my thoughts and my opinions about other possibilities, but I didn't want to sound as if I don't appreciate you coming to council and letting us know what you're doing.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you so much. On the Bellwether Housing was one of the projects in the project list for the $10 million allocation that we had asked about previously. I think it came up earlier last year when we were talking about the Plymouth, maybe it was this year, it was this year, about the Plymouth Housing Project as well. I was just curious if you could remind me what the number of other projects included in that $10 million was because we just talked about a reimbursable grant earlier today on the same developer and then the $1 million allocation now. So I just wanted to understand what's remaining in that list and then how does this fit in?
Sure. So the reimbursable, the grant that we're getting is actually from Commerce to buy the condo space for a welcoming center of sorts. The amount of money that was dedicated to that couldn't come out of the housing fund because it wasn't affordable housing. It was, it was intended for a different capital need. What we did was ask council about that during the budget, so that was all funded during the budget. I think what Deputy Allen was saying was that grant will supplant those CIP funds. So those funds will be, remain in the CIP and can be repurposed for other things. Council specifically asked the question about the teen center. Maybe that money can be used for some of the things associated with the teen center, for instance. So those will be available for other uses. With respect to the housing money, how about if I send you the matrix that we've been creating that we've provided previously at other, our Public Safety and Human Services report outs that actually list the, that list all of the commitments that have been made to date? Some have been, for instance, to Plymouth Housing, there have been some others, but that list is very comprehensive and has been shared previously and I would hate to leave anyone out or forget the exact amount of money that has been committed.
Right, and I think the underlying question there is the, how much money has been committed to date? And then how many total developers did we list on there? Just curious.
Yeah, that'll be absolutely clear. If memory serves me correctly, there's a little bit more than $4 million left before the Bellwether commitment. So that'll be clear.
And we're getting part of that money back?
Not the same bucket of money.
Okay, got it, okay, thank you. That's the clarification I needed.
Thank you, Council President Kritzer.
Yeah, thank you. Just want to express my appreciation for us jumping on this and being able to work with the county. It looks like we're putting in $1 million, they're putting in $1.15 million to be able to address this gap. One of the things our council talked about during our council retreat this year was really making sure that we could show up for our community during this uncertain federal moment and make sure that where we could, we could fill gaps and we could not stall progress on the goals and values that we've committed to. Something I've seen our council commit to via our comprehensive plan is to address affordable housing needs, especially for families and to make sure that we have that, you know, 50 percent area median income type of housing that's available for families that are living in our community so they can access this really wonderful community we live in. And as mentioned, we have invested in this project, but I see us saying, okay, there, this is in a bailout, this is literally us committing to addressing a gap that's been caused by actions of our federal government. And that's what I've heard from our council is a value that we want to stand up for. So I'm just glad you brought us this opportunity and happy to support you in doing so. Thank you.
Thank you. I did want to add too, like one thing, it's we're not trying to fill the whole gap, as we mentioned too. We're really trying to align our values and knowing the amount of, like, through a lot of our zoning changes, we're going to be getting some of that 50 percent AMI, but at the studio and one-bedroom level. It's really rare where we're going to get those two and three-bedroom levels in our community. And if I, I think this is correct from the last time I was looking at this, but the difference between 50 percent area median income and 60 percent area median income for a family is $500 a month. And to me, that was like very tangible to think like, we can help this number of families for this number of years with this education now and know that we're going to be able to secure $500 a month for each one of those families. And so just wanted to make it very tangible too, to like our community values and commitment for being an inclusive community.
Council President Kritzer.
Just one follow-up on that, you know, and as we think about things like investments in this versus something like rental assistance, which is also really important, if we think about creating these units and the value that we get over time, over time, we're going to see that that value be greater for those families.
Exactly, thank you.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and add my comments and I'm sorry, the Councilmember Fields is no longer on the call, it looks like, so if he hops back on, we'll let everyone know. But just, just to add in, thank you again so much for bringing this. This is a really important project and these are really important homes at a price point for everyday folks in our community that are really needed. Affordable housing was also just, and the cost of housing was just ranked the number one priority by our community in our community survey and exceeded some of the issues that actually have been in that top spot the last few years. In terms of setting precedent, I hope that the council will actually move forward in setting a precedent that this tool we used of setting some dollars on the side to take advantage of moments to help actualize our housing action plan is worth pursuing again in future budgets. When other council members and other jurisdictions ask me, how did you guys do that or, or why were you able to move so quickly on that one back in February? It's because we set ourselves up with tools. So I'm really proud of our city and our council for setting those dollars aside and fully support the action and the authorization of the mayor to, to make this investment. It looks like we have no further comments on this item. Thank you again for bringing this and of course, we look forward to being with Bellwether on October the 7th.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.